How was last night?
They tied it up, yeah.
Just going to game seven?
No, they won their first round and they're in the second round. They go to the conference championship. Semi-quarters championship. Conference championship.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. Today is May 7th. Time is now 5:00 PM. The City Council, the City of Trinidad will hold a play today. Regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Trinidad will now come to order. Please rise those flag of allegiance. Small.
Flag of allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call vote please.
Benado?
Here.
Goodall?
Here.
Grago? Here. Lopez?
Here.
McHane?
Here.
Miles?
Here.
Rico?
Here. I have a proclamation for Hospital Week. From the Office of the Mayor, Trinidad, Colorado, proclamation, Hospital Week, May 12th through the 18th, 2019. Whereas National Hospital Week is a celebration of hope and healing, and the hospitals, health systems, and the men and women who support the health and well-being of their communities through dedication and compassionate care. And whereas, celebrating National Hospital Week provides an opportunity to thank all of the dedicated individuals, physicians, nurses, therapists, engineers, food service workers, volunteers, administrators, and so many more for their contributions. And whereas, the hard-working people that comprise our hospital deserve widespread regard and appreciation for keeping our community healthy. And whereas, this celebration serves as a reminder that hospitals are the foundation of our community to serve people from all walks of life. And whereas, the community is very fortunate to have Mont San Rafael Hospital to fulfill the needs of the community with highly-trained professionals who work closely as a team to provide healthcare service. And whereas, it is through Mont San Rafael Hospital's commitment to the healthcare of those they serve that they have continued to attract surgeons, physicians, and nurses at specialized services and have embarked upon a $35 million expansion and renovation. Now therefore, I Philip T. Rico, Mayor of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, on behalf of the Trinidad City Council do hereby proclaim, May the 12th through the 18th, 2019, as Hospital Week. In the City of Trinidad, Colorado, and urge all citizens to join Mont San Rafael Hospital in their groundbreaking on May the 16th and encourage all who are able to support their fundraising efforts to ensure quality healthcare continues locally. We witness where I have here on two set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed. Mayor T. Rico, May the 7th, 2019. And why we'll be doing this is, the groundbreaking is next week and I will be presenting this as well to the hospital administrator and board next week at the groundbreaking services. So I'll give this to you here. Approval of the agenda, council, any changes? I do. I'd like the table, number 8, see the resolution authorized and suspended for the 911. And the seat of the Trinidad First Quarter, 2019. Now pending further discussion. Good. And a second?
I second that.
Any discussion on that? Okay. Any other changes? Call vote please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago? Yes. Lopez?
Yes.
McHane?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. We have no policy items or staff reports at this time. Petitions or communications are all written. We have anybody signed up? Anybody? Mark Sexton was supposed to be here, I don't think he's here yet. Go forward.
He just snuck in.
Said you might be running the bill.
Thank you. Hi. Good evening. Good evening. I wanted to take the opportunity to address the council and introduce my partner here, Michael Joy, who is President and Chief Operating Officer of Evergreen Natural Resources. And first and foremost, wanted to express our appreciation to the mayor and this council for taking a position, recent legislation that's now law here in Colorado. And we very much appreciate the position that a lot of individual council members and the mayor and our county commissioners do. And basically, we want to express our gratitude. We, it was probably not easy for us to come to this decision, but it was the right decision. It was the right sentiment expressed and we're very grateful that people were willing to stand up and have their votes counted and have their opinions as a matter of public record. Wanted to give the city council and the mayor a chance to ask us any questions about what's going on as it affects us and our operations and what's going on with our operations in the, out here in the canyons west of town. I'll ask Michael to make a few remarks also, but the, I want you to be aware that we have strong support from our investors who are headquartered in New York and Denver. And they understand the situation here in Colorado. A lot of investors are quite honestly scared to come to Colorado right now because of this legislation and this new law. The governor has assured us that he believes it will create a stability to the oil and gas industry in Colorado and as he puts it, they will put an end to the oil and gas wars. I didn't know we were at war. And don't plan to stay in a war situation or even have any battles. What I plan to do is stay focused, do what we need to do here and help our operations here, help our people, help this community. But it is going to be a deterrent to a lot of capital coming into Colorado. My goal is to show our investors that we're going to not just survive this new regulatory environment, but we're going to find a way to thrive in it. And among the things that we can do are, we asked our investors to finance a subsidiary where we would go in and do our own well services and vertically integrate. And by providing services that would have been provided by smaller companies, but also larger companies such as lumberjay or Halliburton, names that are familiar to people in our business on the service side, we're going to do those services ourselves. We're going to use our own people. We're going to use that to try to improve our cost structure. This is not a great time to be a natural gas producer. Natural gas prices are down nationally and with the, there's a phenomenon that with the glut of gas coming out of Midland and the Permian Basin, I should say with all the oil that's coming out, there's a lot of associated natural gas. And that associated natural gas is good for the consumer because it's depressed prices among natural gas all over this country. So it's a tough time to be a natural gas producer in this country if you're focused purely on natural gas as we are. However, there's some, however, we're in a niche here in Los Angeles County and I think we're going to do, I think we're going to be okay. And I'm going to accept the governor's word that this is going to be good for oil and gas in Colorado. And we're going to try to, we're going to do everything we can to work with him, his administration, and make this work. Along the same, I've met with some of you and talked about our goals. We would like to see if there's something we could do to create more power generation locally. With a supply like this, with a natural gas supply, that's something that we certainly need to investigate. There's some regulatory and other hurdles to doing that, but we're going to try. I guess I want to give everyone, I want to give everyone the opportunity to ask us questions and to also let everyone know, whatever it takes, we're going to keep trying and we're going to try to make this work. And I think we will. We've got really good people here. It was so great to come back to this community and find so many people that have been here working with this, working with the original Evergreen Resources that would pioneer them with the new Evergreen Natural Resources. I mean, we've had people, we have people out there who've been with us for 20, 25 years and it's wonderful and their families have been in this area for generations. And I want to take the opportunity, in times that I'm not available, I want to encourage you to call on Michael Joy and also to, you know, a lot of us, we're all around. We're not hard to get ahold of, but I just want you to have this opportunity to meet Michael and for us to answer the questions you have about what is going on specifically.
Thanks, Mark. Firstly, we're here to say thank you for the support that we got from the community and from the city council in Senate Bill 181. I also wanted to relate to you what we did. Wasn't simply to ask you for support, which everyone was gracious about. We worked directly in front of the governor. Mark has a personal relationship with the governor. I'm not going to tell you, he has his cell phone, but he does. And they talk regularly. And for our part, we went forth and said, what we want you to do, Mr. Governor, is go to the community. We want you to talk to the community members. We want you to see the impact that we have. It's not us asking you to relax regulation. We're asking you to go and the regulatory authorities to go to the community and see what we can do to that. It's not about less regulation for us, it's about responsible regulation for us. We had that conversation directly with the governor. We have the assurance of the governor that we will be able to continue to operate in the community as the industry has been doing for the last 20 years. What many of you wouldn't know, would have any reason to know, is about three months ago, I challenged all the folks that work here in the field for us to start establishing new production. I gave them 100 days to do that. So that start date would have been May 26th. So after the bill went into effect, people began to ask, what's the impact on us? Is this going to change our timing? And we said, yes. In fact, it is going to change our timing. What I want you to do is move that start date back. Not into June, we moved it back a week, into May 20th. Because we want to demonstrate both, I shouldn't say both, we want to demonstrate to the employees, we want to demonstrate to the community, we want to demonstrate to the governor, we want to demonstrate to our financial backers that Colorado is still open for business. And I have every expectation, and some of our employees, by the way, are sitting behind me here and will tell you this, that that is in fact going to happen. The industry's been in the community for a couple of decades now and Mark and I are here to make sure that this industry is in the community for a couple of decades more. And again, thank you for your support.
It's pretty unusual for us to have comments from the council. Does anybody want to make a comment? Do you think it's necessary or do you want to? You know, I do have something that I wanted to mention to you because I know a gentleman who is retired and retired just a few years ago from the oil and gas industry together. I was talking to him over the weekend and he was talking about the same sentiments that companies are hesitant to move in Colorado. And it's because each entity, each community can develop, or each county can develop their own individual rules and regulations. And after I, after talking to him, I thought, the ones, in our area here, it's Wefeno and Los Angeles County. And I was going to talk to the county commissioners, is why don't they develop regulations one in the same? It would make it a little bit more amenable, I think, for someone to want to come into that county possibly. But that is one thing that I wanted to mention to you. The other thing is, I also have read that there's a webinar upcoming, I think, on how to deal with this situation?
There are quite a few, so I don't know which one you're talking about. I guess it depends whether you're pro-industry or anti-industry. It's the sentiment of the webinar, but I think the administration, I think you're referring to one that the administration is encouraging also. And as you're aware, there are quite a few counties and cities that have taken very different positions on this. If you're in Weld County, you want to do everything you can to develop the oil and gas industry. I feel that's saying, let the oil and gas industry continue to do well. Weld County is the largest natural gas producer and oil and gas, it's the largest oil and gas producer county in the state of Colorado and is a significant county nationally. But Los Angeles County is, you know, ranked fifth in terms of natural gas production in the state of Colorado, so it's significant too. And I think that what, one of the goals was to give more local control. And it appears to be a need on a case-by-case basis because certain areas feel they have a good relationship and they don't need to do more regu, don't need more regulations. A few areas apparently feel they do need more regulations and need to, a few folks around Boulder, for example, are absolutely paranoid about anyone with a drilling rig coming anywhere near, anywhere near their area. Of course, there is, that gets into other rights because what about the guy who owns the mineral rights who wants to see them developed and now can't get his, can't get something done? Does he have a takings claim or how does he get compensated for the fact that he doesn't get the benefit? Those are all areas that everyone's going to have to work out. We've heard nothing but positive encouragement from this area, from this community. We want to acknowledge that, we want to thank everyone for it. And we still want to use this as an opportunity. If there's something we can do to do a better job, let us know. We're going to keep trying.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have a couple of items here, some things that, you know, read. This one came to us from the solo tourism that occurred here about a month ago. And says, the City of Trinidad, thank you for being a host for the 2019 Solo Tourism Summit. What a taste of Trinidad. And to thank you for your support, the solo summit again, someone else, the solo steering committee. So we just wanted to read that, that it went over really well, those of you that attended that evening. It was a great event. I have another letter here from the Trinidad, Los Angeles County Veterans Memorial Committee. Dear Mayor Rico, City Council Members, Joe Benado, Rest of Goodall, Karen Grago, Carlos Lopez, Anthony Mate, Michelle Miles. On behalf of the Veterans Memorial Committee, we would like to invite you to join our special event, the Armed Forces Day Parade, May the 18th, 2019, to support our troops, men and women in uniform, and honor our veterans of the Los Angeles, of Los Angeles County. The parade begins at 10:00 AM, line up at 9:00 AM at the Redneck Smokehouse. The ceremony will follow at the memorial park with free barbecue picnic. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Linda Barry, event coordinator. Consent agenda number five. Approval of regular meeting minutes, April 16th, 2019. I do have one change on that. There was something about the Amtrak Softwares Chief. And what it was is that we are going to hire an assistant to Randy Brauburger. And in there you have something about to handle the Tiger 9 grant. So you need to eliminate the Tiger 9 grant information file and just say that we are going to hire an assistant to Randy Brauburger. And that work will be started on the Tiger 9 grant. So those are the two changes.
Is that on the consent agenda?
It wasn't a consent agenda. It's not.
Cinemeter.
Oh, I'm sorry.
IMB, approval of temporary modification, apprentices application filed by Mon Carmel Health, Thomas and Community Center. And I live Robinson Avenue for the Mon Carmel Festival on July 19th through July 21st. Do we have a representative present?
Yes, sir.
Approval of bills to the tune of $1,619,170 and 42 cents. IMB, approval of payroll on April 20th, 2019, through May 4th, 2019, to May 17th, 2019, for the tune of $232,770 and 81 cents. Another one, please.
So moved to approve the consent agenda?
A second?
Second.
Call vote please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago? Yes. Lopez?
Yes.
McHane?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Adam Sexton, public hearings, City of A. New hotel and restaurant liquor license application filed by GFD LLC, doing business at Big Daddy's Restaurant at 443 North Commercial Street. Hearing is now open. Wesley Lavong?
How are you guys doing today?
Let's, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
And for the record, you are Wesley Lavong?
Yes, sir.
How do you spell your last name, please?
L.A.V., L.A.V.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Lavong, you are the 100% owner of GFD LLC, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you are doing business as Big Daddy's Restaurant?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At 443 North Commercial Street?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Mr. Lavong, as the mayor indicated when he called the item on the agenda, this is an application for a hotel and restaurant liquor license, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
What was the business that was there before this?
It was W.D.'s.
Okay. So this is the same location as W.D.'s Restaurant that was there previously?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you know if there was a liquor license at that premises, Mr. Lavong?
There wasn't.
Okay. And so this application for a hotel and restaurant liquor license, you're asking for a liquor license where there once was one before, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Lavong, if I could, please, to begin, have you ever had a liquor license in the state of Colorado?
Yes, sir.
This will be your first one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are you familiar with the state laws regarding liquor sales and the things that are required of you if you're given a liquor license?
Yes, sir.
Also the local laws of City of Trinidad?
I am now.
Okay. And are, how many employees are you hoping to have, Mr. Lavong?
Hoping, close to 30.
Okay. And forgive me for not knowing this, but are you in business currently? Are you, is your restaurant open?
Yes.
Okay, but without a liquor license?
Yes, sir.
And how long have you been doing business there?
Since April 7th.
Okay. And how many employees do you currently have?
15.
Okay. And how, is that basically where you're hoping to stay, is it 15 employees?
Hoping, closer to 30.
Okay. And of those employees, do you have an approximate figure how many are going to be serving or handling or, you know, dealing with alcoholic beverages?
Close to six.
Okay. Only six out of 30?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And are you familiar with tips certification?
Yes, sir.
Okay, have you in fact been tip certified yet?
I have not.
Okay. Are you and the six employees that are going to be handling alcohol for Big Daddy's Restaurant, if you're approved, will you all get tips trained?
Absolutely.
Okay. And you understand the legal liability for things such as selling to a minor or serving a visibly intoxicated person?
Absolutely.
You understand that there, not only is legal liability, but if you're accused of that and found to be guilty of that, you can lose your liquor license if you were approved this evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, Mr. Lavong, I want to ask you, sir, as part of the application, you understand that there's a personal background check. You understand that?
I do.
Okay, I need to ask you, sir, there's an, excuse me, entry in there where you had an arrest from 2018 for what the lead charge was first-degree assault out of Quebola. Do you recall that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and do you, there were no charges filed? And so I would tell city council that they have to treat that like nothing ever happened. But were you arrested on that?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to tell council what happened?
Yes, sir, might as well. So, so, tough story, but a girl that I'm currently dating, her ex-boyfriend decided it'd be a great idea to come to my house with a fire. And so after it was explained that way, that's why all the charges were dropped.
Okay. Potential implications for make my day?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And defending your own property?
Absolutely.
Okay. And other than that, I think it's a pretty clear criminal history and I wanted to give you a chance to explain that.
I appreciate it.
No, absolutely, thank you. And sir, you are leasing the premises, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you're leasing from the landlord or renting from Billy Chantel Quintana?
Yes, sir.
16-month lease?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you have, you've even personally guaranteed that lease, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sir, I just a final few questions for you, and that is, you had a petition circulated in support of your application for this liquor license, correct?
Yes.
And you had people circulate the petition for you?
Yes, sir.
And have you had students to review that petition?
I did.
Okay. And there are approximately 65 signatures that I counted on there. Of all the valid signatures, they all appear to be in favor of the granting of the liquor license. Is that your understanding?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you had people explain, your circulators explain what you were hoping to do and what you were applying for?
Yes.
Okay. And sir, you understand the requirements of a hotel and restaurant liquor license? You have certain food requirements in relation to the amount of alcohol you serve. You understand all those things?
I do.
Okay. And sir, I, you know, just want to make sure you understand that you have an ongoing obligation to comply and cooperate with all city officials, you understand that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you're responsible for the renewal of your liquor license if granted and everything associated with that if you are, again, given a liquor license by city council this evening. You understand that?
I do.
Is there anything else? I know I haven't given you much of a chance to speak this evening. Anything else you want to say or tell council in support of this?
Not currently.
Okay. Council, the mayor, I have no further questions. Questions?
Not currently.
Okay. Council, the mayor, I have no further questions. Questions? The only question I had was, there were a couple of violations on the property. I was wondering if they were all taken care of? There was one that hadn't, they were all taken care of?
All of them, yes.
Okay, that was my other question. Thank you. You can be seated, Mr. Lavong.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone in the audience to speak for the application? Or against the application? None? Reposed? So there's no reason to go into executive session? So I need a motion to, for the restaurant liquor license application?
I move that we grant a new hotel and restaurant liquor license, filed by GFD LLC, doing business as Big Daddy's Restaurant at 443 North Commercial Street.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call vote please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McHane?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
This matter came on for a hearing on an application of GFD LLC, doing business at Big Daddy's Restaurant, at 443 North Commercial Street in Trinidad, Colorado, for a new hotel and restaurant license. Before the city council, the City of Trinidad, Colorado, acting in its capacity as a local licensing authority on May 7th, 2019, in the city council chambers and city hall. The city council, having reviewed the application and supporting documents and reports of the city clerk and other city staff, petitions submitted into evidence at the hearing and testimony taken during the hearing makes the following findings. The neighborhood consists of an area located within the city's corporate limits. Wesley Lavong testified in favor of granting the license. No other persons testified in favor of or in opposition of granting the license. The city clerk's report showed that there are 42 liquor licenses outlets within the neighborhood. Of these, there are five fermented malt beverage off-premises licenses, one fermented malt beverage on-premise license, one club license, 12 hotel and restaurant licenses, seven liquor store licenses, seven tavern licenses, one arts license, six beer and wine licenses, and two lodging and entertainment licenses. The applicant submitted a petition regarding the liquor license application. The petition contained 79 total signatures, of which 68 were residents of the business owners and managers within the district or neighborhood, 21 years of age or older, in favor of the issuance of a liquor license at this location. No remonstrances were submitted. The applicant's testimony and other evidence made a prima facie showing that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being respected as liquor outlets, and the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor the issuance of a license. Based on the evidence presented at the hearing and the evidence... Based on the evidence presented at the hearing and the investigative materials provided for the hearing, the city council finds that reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by the existing liquor establishments, that, um, that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of a license to the applicant, and that the applicant officers are satisfactory, are of satisfactory moral character. Therefore, the city council of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, as the local liquor licensing authority hereby approves the application of G F D L L C, doing business at Big Daddy's Restaurant at four forty-three North Commercial Street in Trinidad, Colorado.
Thank you, Mr. Lavong.
You're welcome.
Good luck, Mr. Lavong.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six B, public hearing for consideration ordinance, repealing and reenacting, chapter two, administration, article seventeen, code of conduct, code of conduct and code of ethics. Hearing is now open. Do we have to swing them?
No, no. And, and Mayor, council members, if you don't mind, I'm just going to run me through it, and that's okay, and I, um, I know you've been discussing this for a long time, we've been discussing this for a long time, and I, um, would just suggest to you that this is the appropriate way to go with, uh, with the ethics code, and I, I'm here to answer any questions you may have or anything we'd like to discuss, but I don't want to assume there's anything that you necessarily want to go over if there isn't.
Mr. Lavong, have any questions?
I do have questions. Can we throw a couple of questions, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have one question.
No questions, thank you for your work. No questions? Is there anyone in the audience to speak for a change of ordinance? Repealing of the ordinance? Or against? We're closed. Item six B one, second reading ordinance, repealing and reenacting, chapters two, administration, article seventeen, code of conduct and code of ethics. You have a motion, please? You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Uh, the only thing I wanted to mention, there's no change or anything like this, but, uh, I'd rather I had sent out something from Sersa, and I'm not sure if any of us had the opportunity to read that, there was some information, uh, about, uh, job harassment issues, um, what elective officials need to know, so if you get an opportunity to read it, it was, it was pretty thorough, so just take an opportunity. Call vote, please.
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Muntay?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
We have no unfinished business. Miscellaneous business, eight B, job safety analysis, policy adoption, you have a motion, please? Second?
Second.
Staff, have any information on that?
How's everyone doing this evening?
Why don't you introduce yourself?
Yeah, I want to introduce myself, uh, my name is Martin Wong, I'm the new safety coordinator for the city of Trinidad.
Martin, spell your last name?
Uh, W A L N. And, uh, I've been in this position for two months now, and I've been with the city of Trinidad for four years as a lineman for Power and Light. And the purpose of this J S A form is to assess the job hazards within, uh, each job task that everyone does within the city of Trinidad, if that's in Power, Light, uh, Public Works, whatever job task, uh, that may be, um, the purpose of it is to assess, um, each job task, and it even also helps employees that are new and reoccurring employees that have been there for twenty-plus years on jobs that actually have been a reoccurring event where they do it every day, and the purpose of it is, I can show you better than I can, I can tell you. What it does is it just has a whole little check, uh, checkoff worksheet here that, you know, it talks about cold weather, does certain reaching, bending, uh, carrying, pulling, uh, all the P P E, and then on the back, you have to list every single job task that you do. And with every single job task, there's potential hazards with that job task, and then certain P P E, personal protective equipment that is required to do that job task. And, uh, I don't know if all you are aware, but the safety culture and the sa- and the safety atmosphere period has been lacking for the past thirty years. And this is a first step on making this safety program, uh, going into the right, uh, direction. Um, it's required, and this is going to be a requirement, they need to have this done, and, uh, I'm getting everyone in every department, supervisors, uh, a booklet, it's a metal binder that has the safety job, uh, safety analysis form and a, a safety concern, uh, worksheet, uh, to, to be able to do all these, uh, all these worksheets. Did you guys get copies of these?
Yes.
Okay. So you guys, uh, have read them and understand them? Okay. And you guys have any questions about it?
No.
I'm just thinking, what, what happens if, something like, if you're on a job, and some of them's a job, you have a hard hat or something?
Okay.
And, uh, I know hard hats are, are vital to what we do, but, you know, what happens to an employee or, or whatever if they don't have that hard hat on? I mean, there's jobs that you can do with a hard hat, there's jobs you can have, like crawling under a car, or crawling under a street cleaner or something like that.
Yeah, uh, yeah, every job has different, uh, hazards associated with it, but for the general P P E that we require all employees to wear is hard hat, safety gloves, safety vests, uh, hearing protection, uh, safety boots, uh, et cetera, they need to be wearing that every time they are doing a job task for the city of Trinidad. So if I go on a job site and they are not wearing the proper P P E, I can do a reprimand, uh, for that employee to the supervisor, and it's up to the supervisor to discipline them. And, uh, yeah, right now, I'm just, I'm very lenient with it because I'm almost in the development stage of everything, and, uh, I can't just go up and just write someone up because they also need to get the proper training that hasn't been done recently. And, um, that's where I'm going with this safety program, is I'm getting everything set in place and all the trainings and having every, uh, supervisor trained, because it starts from the top to the bottom, and without the supervisor being trained and knowing the job hazards and knowing the jobs completely, they're not going to be able to teach their, uh, employees underneath them. And, like I said, the safety atmosphere, uh, here, it needs to be changed, and just in this past two months, I've seen a big difference. And, uh, this job safety analysis form is gonna put that in the right direction, and honestly, everyone does a sob, uh, a job safety analysis form, it's called toolbox talk, tailboards, uh, whatever you want to call them. But this is also even a recommendation through Sersa, and, uh, it's also a requirement that needs to be done, and the employees need to practice every day when they're on the job. And this also-
With following those, those amendments there, whatever they are, uh, would that help in our Sersa insurance, this father is getting us better?
Doing an active safety program is important.
Right, I mean, would that help with insurance wise too?
The goal is to not have any accidents, and the fewer accidents we have, the better insurance rates are, because, when we have accidents, we create workers comp claims, and those cost a lot of money. The other side of it is, we want people going home safe to their families, I think, it's, you know, you should be avoiding workers comp claims because people are injured, there's a reason for it. And we want people to be safe, we don't want them jumping into holes without protection, make sure they're shored up, those kind of things. When you move around without a hard hat, you bang your head on something, you realize, well, it's a good thing you had that on.
Yeah.
So.
The majority of the claims that you're going to see are, you know, back injuries, uh, repetitive disorders, uh, you know, very minor, uh, injuries, but those are the majority of the claims. And when you think about the big picture, and you, and you think about claims, and, uh, even lawsuits, uh, whatnot, that is not going to, the dollar amount is not even going to be equivalent on what we are going to spend or what we are going to invest in safety and to prevent that from happening. And, uh, the goal here too is eventually throughout the years and the safety program gets better and better and better, we are going to see that, that price difference when it comes to saving money on the claims and less and less people getting injured. Because you got to take accountable for, you know, we, we don't know when someone's going to get hurt, and there can be a lot of claims and there can be less, and the dollar amount, it's, it's pretty large when you start getting into working comp claims.
I don't know if I could ask this question, but I'm going to ask it. That's just, it's been discussed, is union employees do it?
Yes.
Okay, I'll. Well, we look at, I guess I could ask.
Okay.
Uh, nothing really, I'm just curious how you want to find an alignment into a job safety analysis coordinator?
Uh, well, when I was a, I've been a lineman for seven years, and I started my career in, uh, Casa Rock, uh, for a contracting company. And ever s- ever since I was in the industry, I always seen a safety guy come in and, you know, do his safety inspections and talk to everyone and that, I was like, oh, that maybe be something I want to get into. And then eventually, uh, when I came here, just recently, I started school, and, uh, I'll be getting my bachelor's degree in May of twenty twenty. And that kind of stirred me into it, and then this job position opened, and it was a perfect, perfect opportunity for me to get into the industry. And especially since it was within the company that I'm already working with, so.
You get to stay warm in the winter.
Yeah, I get to stay warm and out of the danger of the high voltage and heights and, yeah.
Well, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
How's your reception been from staffs so far with new changes? I know change is sometimes challenging.
Yeah, change is, uh, very challenging, especially if they've been doing this for thirty-plus years, and majority have. Um, it's uncomfortable, and people don't like being uncomfortable, but, uh, I'm getting a lot of good feedback, actually, especially from, uh, utilities, all foremen's, uh, department heads, and that's where I need the backing from is, you know, the management, because without them, this program is not going to go anywhere. I think without you guys, it's not going to go anywhere. And it, it needs to be a hundred percent, uh, teamwork through all departments. You know, this is the city of Trinidad, and we need to work together and communicate together for this to even work. But yeah, I've been getting great, uh, feedback, and I haven't been really seeing any retaliation from anyone, uh, you know, I have just, I have had to talk a couple of people to do certain things, you know, a couple of times, but that's in the beginning stage, after that is there's going to be zero tolerance.
After you do the year, uh, initial analysis, is there any follow-up after that?
Uh, yes.
Is it ongoing?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, the only way we will store these on file is if it's permit required, and that's, uh, with, uh, hot work, and that's, uh, any type of welding or arc flash and stuff like that, or if confined space entry, if it needs to be permitted. They need to be stored for three months, or three years, sorry. And then, uh, these are a good, uh, tool for me to visit with the foremen's and department's every morning and go over the J S A and talk about the hazards that are associated with the job, and, uh, it kind of gives me a, a sense of what they're doing every day and everything like that. But it also helps with new, uh, new employees. If they have a new employee, uh, this is a good tool to use when there's a new, uh, employee on the job that, hey, this is the step, this is the process, do you have your P P E with you, are you using it correctly, did you expect it correctly? And it, and it gives the opportunity for the supervisor to, you know, hey, if you, some people actually come out, and a player actually come out and say, I don't think this is safe. And that can be discussed in the job safety analysis form also.
You don't do anything with, uh, staff here at City Hall?
Uh, yes.
Oh, you do?
Yes, yeah, I'm, uh, I'm responsible for all the trainings, pretty much for the whole city of Trinidad, uh, within the safety aspect of it.
Okay. Understanding that the program is beneficial, necessary, required, what do you project or anticipate will be your expense needs in terms of providing training and providing additional supplemental equipment?
Okay, uh, yeah, I actually did a, a budget for just general P P E, personal protective equipment. Uh, that's including incentives, uh, incentive is important, if you don't incent, uh, to give incentives to your employees, they're going to feel like they're just getting bossed around, and you want to make this fun because, you know, safety doesn't earn any money or anything like that, but it allows you to go home safely to your, your family and also to do your job effectively. Um, fifteen thousand just for a P P E for utilities, uh, public works, incentive programs and extras, and that's not even including the shipping that's involved with that. That's just basic P P E, that is just hard hat, safety vest, hard hat inserts, uh, gloves, hearing protection, um, I wouldn't say boots because we give the employees a clothing allowance, and that's what that purpose is for. Um, that is not including the specialized equipment like harnesses, uh, respirators, you know, stuff like that, that within departments, they can kind of get that within their budget if they want to get that kind of stuff. Um, and this is not even talking about certain themes and aspects of buildings and being up to code and stuff like that. And, uh, I actually have a guy that's here with me that we did a little runaround through the buildings, and we've seen a lot of issues that need to be, uh, fixed, and I, I can't really tell you that, that price point because it can fluctuate and it can be very expensive if, if, if we bring it down to the, the finest thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm bothered.
Uh, you mentioned, of course, that the, uh, employee themselves, they pay for their own boots.
Yep.
Uh, are they required for the metaphors as well?
The metaphors?
Different boots, or who pays for those, the employee or is that part of your P P E?
Uh, well, just talking about the boots, uh, they're required to have a safety toe boot. And, uh, we can provide them what, what is, is just a steel toe covering, I think it's put over-
It comes up there.
Over the top of the thing, yeah, uh, yeah, we could definitely provide that for the workers, but the purpose of that clothing allowance is to get, uh, boots or, you know, other, uh, equipment like long sleeves or winter gear and et cetera. And, um, where I'm going with that is if they're not wearing their safety toe boots and stuff like that, that is showing that they're not using the allowance appropriately, and then there, that would be a reprimand.
Uh, one thing, and I brought this up before, and hopefully that you'll really be, uh, strict on this, is, uh, I brought this, sometimes when they've been digging, and they've not, I forget what they call it, use the side supports, whenever it's such things. And, uh, I think that's a real hazard, a major hazard, that we don't need anybody buried somewhere, to make sure that, that is used all the time. I'd rather it be used and, and water or the gas turned off for a little extra time and have that in place than have it, I mean, really get hurt or killed. I mean, it's really, really important. And I'm really surprised, uh, that there's not a direct savings cost or insurance once this is fully implemented, that's kind of why, that's kind of why that person doesn't apply, it doesn't actually.
Yeah, it does, but it doesn't.
Some others?
I mean, if you, if you improve your safety-
Sway yourself, Lucy.
Okay, Lucy, okay, Desi, this is the deal. If you, you know, really, even though we haven't had a bona fide safety program within the city, just looking at the premiums from one year to the next, wages increase, you, you hire more people, and last year you got a reduction, I think, in women's compensation, so that's where it's going to show. It's, it's not off the top discount, but if your safety record improves, your women's compensation is good.
Yeah, I know, in the private enterprise, I know that, you know, if you implement a safety program, there usually something is right off the top, I've seen that in the past.
Yeah, going off of that.
That was in the old days.
Yeah.
The other question I have for you is, you know, we hire, uh, private contractors to do
certain jobs. If you go by and you see that they are not using safety equipment, can you shut the project down?
Um,
They're doing unsafe?
If it is our, uh, city, uh, job sites, yes, if it's a contractor's job site, no.
I'm talking about the doing job for the city of Trinidad, one of our job sites.
Yeah, one of our job sites, yes, I can, yeah, I, I have the capability of shutting down the job if it's unsafe, yes. And, uh, part of that is I would actually be going out, uh, on callouts if there's a water leak, downlines, et cetera, and I will be, uh, doing, uh, you know, a hazard assessment on that, and do, and going with their J S A, going through their J S A, before they do the job, uh, I will also be out there doing that on, on, on the calls.
You're sort of like OSHA then, huh?
Uh, no.
Really, I mean, if you could shut something down, you've got a lot of power to do that, so.
Yes, but I am not a, a safety professional, like, I'm not certified. I'm getting my degree, and getting your, uh, safety professional certif- certification is a totally different animal, and you got to go through your OSHA five hundred, uh, general industry, uh, five hundred construction and five oh one general industry. And then you are, are certified, uh, trainer to trainer or something it's called, and that is actually something that I need to go through to be able to write off these job sites.
You know, one time, uh, the college here had an OSHA training program, I don't, I don't know if they still have it or not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was an OSHA ten or OSHA thirty class.
And I, and I think this is, uh, a long time coming, and, and hopefully you did a good job.
Yeah, 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 thank you guys. Okay, any further questions? Awesome, thank you guys.
For any further questions or discussion, call vote, please.
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Muntay?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?[1792.62]
Yes, item eight D. Authors, uh, authorized change for previous deed approved purchase of two police vehicles for the two thousand eighteen budget. Do you want some please?
Go on, move.
Second?
Second.
Chief, what do you have for us?
Hi, so, um, this is the vehicles you guys actually approved in two thousand eighteen. Uh, we had to change vendors cause they stopped making the vehicle and we didn't get it in in time. So you're actually saving money, that's the good news. Ten thousand, is that what it was? Okay, from that last bid, so we're, we're saving money with going to GSA.
Any questions for Chief Torianson?
The vehicles and equipment meet your needs?
Uh, so the vehicles come, uh, standard equipped, but then I have to do all the add-ons later. I'll come back to council with the, I don't have to do this part of the, the lights and stuff.
Well, how many, uh, vehicles, excuse me, Mr. Matee, how many vehicles do you have now that are up to pretty close to par now that we could depend on for?
So.
A couple, three years maybe?
So the ones that we got are up to par are the current, um, Fords that we have in fleet, the, the interceptors and my chargers. Um, anything that you see interceptor wise, those are used vehicles and they're on their last legs. So that's what these vehicles will be replacing.
So we have a total of about good corners above.
So, uh, we're roughly around twelve and I'd like, I'd like to get to twenty-five.
Any other questions, Mr. Matee?
No.
Two?
Yes, sir.
These vehicles will be brand new?
They're brand new, yes.
No questions?
No questions, thank you, George.
Well, that was easy, can I stay up for the next one?
Yep. Go up the chair. Call both please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Muntain?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes. Item E, approval acquisition of two additional police vehicles from the twenty nineteen budget for a total of sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventeen dollars and forty-six cents from the GSA. And motion please. Remove that we approved the acquisition of two additional police vehicles from the two thousand nineteen budget. And second please.
Second.
Any other information?
So, uh, again, now this is the two thousand nineteen. Uh, that, that is great amount, so. Uh, the, the one of the, the one on the bottom that's manufactured retail price, that's one off the internet, the one. So I'll, I'll explain it, uh. So I guess there's some confusion on, uh, the background information. Uh, when I was going out, because we have to for the, when we buy through GSA, we have to show what. It would either be locally or what I could buy online through a normal vendor. Uh, to buy those two vehicles, I found online was seventy-one thousand, three hundred forty dollars through GSA at sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventeen dollars. Um, I even went locally and looked and, um. It was roughly forty-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars, but he didn't build in my government package yet. So it would've been a little cheaper than that. But not near as cheap as what we're getting for the GSA. So, um, the, the, the good thing with GSA is they do all the bidding for me. All I go in is I build my car. I tell them what I want and what the extras I want. And then I push it in and then they, uh, tell me what the final price is, so. There's no bidding process for me and I, they already did all that, uh, forward for it. So that's, that's where it's easier for me to do.
Any other discussion? Call both please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Muntain?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Eight F, resolution supporting the grant application for planning grant from the State Board of the Great Outdoors Colorado Trust. And the completion of the crazy French ranch management study. Have a motion please. And local, second?
Second.
Good? Do you have any further explanation? Well, we're, uh, I, I was incorrect the last meeting, there is a match to the, um. The dollar grant that we're looking at. It's part, I, I didn't realize it's part of that program, but it's part of the energy and mineral resources grant program. And it, uh, follows the same calendar and this GOCO money can be used to match DOLA. So we're looking with the just for public lands and nature conservancy to, to, with the necessary, um, matches to, uh, make sure that we can get the whole program. So this will cover our, our match? Well, this will be part of it. I mean, this is the maximum on these grants is seventy-five thousand.
Mr. Mayor, when I asked that question before and I know Mr. Stone told me about, uh, the grant paid back after, to DOLA. But right now, when I'm looking at now, I think it's granted to people, the Great Outdoors Colorado Trust, so. So that grant money, uh, the way I'm understanding it, that we get this grant and that goes back, we pay DOLA, is that what you're trying to?
No, this, this is part of the local match. So you, you apply for a dollar grant and you have to do a fifty percent match.
And we could do that as far as, it doesn't, the Great Colorado Doors just, just participate in just like city parks and stuff like that, like lottery money?
Well. Yeah, that.
Why would it, why would it have consideration of going under the, the purchase of the crazy branch, or the, the study?
That's what it would be applied for is to, to pay for part of the study. So it's estimated, the study is gonna cost between three and four hundred thousand dollars before it's done.
Something that doesn't seem quite right. Maybe I'm just got it off track here or something.
So we, uh, the maximum amount we can apply for in this, in the dollar grant round is two hundred thousand. And so that means if we got the whole amount, we would have to match that.
Match the two hundred thousand.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure we're gonna apply for the whole entire dollar grant. And that's something that we have to determine. But we have plenty of time to do that because the dollar grant doesn't, uh, it's not due until August.
So what will our part be if we get this GOCO?
Um, this is part of the match. We're gonna keep looking for other grants to come up with the rest of the match.
Right. What is our perspective amount that we'll look at paying if we don't get that, yeah?
Um. Depend, it would be fifty percent of whatever we apply for from DOLA.
So we don't have a number what we're gonna apply for?
No, I, we have to determine how much will actually be needed for the study. So you said the GOCO is up to seventy-five thousand, so the minimum, if we apply for, at a max.
Yes.
Forget maximum and minimum. If we apply for all two hundred thousand and we got seventy-five from GOCO, we would have to come up with the other twenty-five, is that correct?
Hundred and twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five.
Well, I think it's a fifty percent.
No. Yeah. Yeah, I thought it was a fifty. Well, it's a fifty fifty grant.
So we have to match it a hundred percent then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, every dollar grant, every energy mineral, mineral resource grant does that. Alright, so it's possibly up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Even if we get the GOCO. Yeah, but that's, that's the job of these organizations. They're looking for grants for wherever they can get them. You know, financing tools. They have, um, in some cases, donors that will do the match for them. Okay, so I'm, I'm not looking at this being an expensive procedure. That's all I got. Any questions?
Yeah, so that's just in case, if, if I'm on the same page, if for some reason we don't get any of these grants. We're on the hook for two hundred thousand for the city, correct? If worst case scenario, we don't get any.
If we were buying this ranch all on our own and paying the entire amount of purchase?
Twenty-five, twenty-four point five million dollars.
Probably not. We have major partners that are working with you.
I understand, I just wanna make sure I'm on the same page, uh, which I, I can see, you know, we have really not put any money into this as of yet anyway, so.
Okay, but that.
Um, I just wanna make sure I'm on the same page.
Okay, and they have picked a, at least tentatively, they've, they've, uh, selected a consultant which, uh, they're. What they're talking about is hiring the same one who did the visioning process. They were impressed with how well she engaged the community. And, uh, who she talked to, what she put in the study, the end product I thought was really good. It was, uh, it was interesting to read about the children in the community. That was really wonderful.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, one more. So. The Lampre Public Trust, and no one knows how much they're gonna need to complete the crazy French man, branch management study.
The number I've heard is three hundred thousand.
Is three, and so we do have a number out there that we are shooting for. Alright. That's what I wanted to know, thank you, Mayor.
Um, good, okay, Grigo?
No, I have one.
Yes, sir, thank you. There enough other discussion? Call both please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes, good luck.
Muntain?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes.
Item G, consideration of purchase of pre, of a pre-cash restroom facility from Central Park. Do you have a motion please?
Make a motion to approve A G.
Okay, I have a second? Second? Was Miles, let me just say that. Mr. Beach?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, at Ms. Grigo's request, I will keep this under an hour. This, of course, is for, uh, replacement of the small block building next to the playground in the lower central park, northeast corner that was. Should've been removed quite a while back. Uh, we started looking at it and it was, of course, it was on the V O J settlement for several reasons, door sizes. Their sink heights, mineral heights, all kinds of stuff. So. We're gonna wanna just remove it. We wanna put the same building exactly that's sitting on the corner of Commercial Elm to the right. The, the only difference would be. The chase door would be on the backside and in the front side where the chase door is now, we'd have an ADA compliant high-low drinking pump, as we know it changes. The sewer, the water is already there, the power is already there, so it shouldn't be a whole lot of investment for the installation. It'll still be a little bit of work because we have to get rid of the building and obviously bring the pad into, into suitable footing for the building. This is for the building, this is, uh, the sole's provider, they're also the GSA type. I won't, I won't use GSA, but I don't think that's the exact phrase, the exact company. It is the, uh, government funding for this type of building, so, or government pricing for this type of building.
And the dollar amount is sixty-five thousand, seventy-eighty-one dollars and forty-four cents. Questions, Mr. Mayor? Sounds like it's necessary. Grigo?
I noticed, I heard that on the, the restroom on Commercial Street, there was a big delay, wasn't there, when it was delaying production?
There was a couple of things, yes, cause we kinda pulled it out of the quay at, at one point and when we pulled it out, they put us at the end of the line.
Okay.
And then we started getting back into it and it was a couple of things too.
That bathroom seems like it's a lot smaller than the one that's there now. Is it? Can it be, or the same size?
Uh, it'll be, it'll be a little bit smaller. Yeah, it won't have quite the number of facilities, but it will be vandal proof. We can say that.
It's a nice looking room.
It is, they're very nice.
You have a question? Time frame?
Um, I will put the order in immediately if it's approved by council. I, I would assume six to eight weeks before the building will be.
You know where I'm going with this, sir, right?
I do, yeah, and that's, that's why I wanna make sure that, I would like to get it before you guys are there.
Yeah.
So it's quite possible. I'd have to check this, uh, C X D, I have not really talked to them, uh, delivery date time.
Outside spigot?
Um, no, probably not. They usually put one in the chase with the, um. Inside the chase was locked up.
Okay, so we would have access?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Fantastic, thank you, sir.
The only question I had is, uh, and I've heard a little bit of comment on the type of siding on this one down here.
Hmm.
Um, new style, is there a new style that would?
Well, there's several different styles.
Think it was a little bit more comfortable to what the area would be, might look at that just.
Yeah, we, we could look at that. We were just trying to keep everything uniform basically, so that people would see, oh, that's, see that's a really nice restroom.
The only question I have is, of course, with any of these facilities, uh, when they're, when they're cleaned, how are they cleaned now? How many times a week are they cleaned at these facilities?
Oh goodness, um, they're cleaned at least once a week for sure, uh, thorough cleaning. They're checked every day. If there's a mess in them at any point, they're, they're cleaned. They're, they're refurbished and replenished to be.
Several years ago, I went to a campsite, this is over in the western part of the state, where they would go in twice a day with a. A kinda like a semi-high pressure hose and just wash the whole thing down. And they would hit the, the two or three that were in the area. And that way it kept them, you know, reasonably clean, but that could be a consideration.
I mean, they're, they're probably checked a couple of times a day if they're honest with you.
I said, that's one thing, that they, these are public facilities and especially this one down here, if, if people are gonna be using that. Good idea to monitor it.
You know, it's my understanding that the one on Commercial down there is just stamped concrete, it's not really brick, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, with, with that said, and you, you quoted us, what, sixty-five thousand? Kinda high for, is it gonna be the same type of building that it is down there?
Yes, sir, that one, the one that was down there, the building itself was sixty-three thousand. It's caught up because of the timeframe from when we, um, ordered it and with the addition of the ADA, uh.
Oh, here's the ADA, yeah, okay, alright, thank you. I was just wondering if that was a little spread.
Any other discussion? Call both please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Muntain?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes.
Item H, memorial resolution acknowledging the contributions of Elizabeth A. Aragon upon her passing, I wanna read that. Memorial resolution of City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, acknowledging the contributions of Elizabeth A. Aragon upon her passing. For as Almighty God in His infinite wisdom has seen fit to take Elizabeth A. Aragon from this earthly life. And whereas Elizabeth Aragon faithfully serves the people of the city of Trinidad. As a member of the Trinidad City Council and Mayor Pro Tim from January two thousand eight to January two thousand twelve. And whereas during her time in Trinidad, Elizabeth Aragon served our community and other civic positions. Including holding a seat on the Trinidad Ambulance Board District, Trinidad Ambulance Board. Third District Crime Victim Compensation Board. Trinidad Planning, Zoning and Agreements Commission, Purgatory River Water Conservancy District. And P D O Chapter J. And whereas upon the passing of Elizabeth Aragon, the city of Trinidad. Wishes by this resolution to acknowledge her many contributions to the community and to express. Its regret and sorrow to the family of Elizabeth A. Aragon. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado. That the mayor and city council do hereby extend their condolences to the family. Of Elizabeth A. Aragon and by this resolution do hereby remember. The many outstanding contributions she made to this Trinidad community. Be further resolved that this resolution shall become part of the official minutes of the proceedings of the city, of the Trinidad City Council. And a copy of the same shall be provided to the family of Elizabeth Aragon. Introduced, read and adopted December day of May two thousand and nineteen. Could I have a motion please?
I say no.
Second?
Second.
Roll please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Muntain?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes.
And I have the resolution here. I'd like to pass around for each council person to sign please. And we'll give it back to Padra. I said now, talk please. Thank you. I have nine council reports. Mr. Benado, start with you.
I just wanna apologize to the council and to the city staff for not being able to attend the. Governor's meeting here and, uh, also for the, uh, grand opening of the hotel down there. My legs weren't working too good that day, the other day and, uh, it's not that I didn't want to be there to participate, but it's just. Sometimes they work, sometimes they don't, so I'm, I'm asking the, this council, I'm sorry that I missed this, I know it's an important step to the city of Trinidad. And, you know, like I always told Audrey, if I, if I can make it, I'll be there, so. That's all I ask.
Please accept it.
I'm sorry for that.
Mr.?
So at the last Parks and Rec meeting, um.
So, at the last Parks and Rec meeting, um, they were reporting that they had a biologist here checking out the river, uh, with the work they've done for the habitat for the fish. The biologists were really excited about the river's shape and thought that the survival numbers of last year's fish was an excellent number. So, I know they've asked for some approval, for some money to be stocking that river, close to a thousand pounds of fish. So, we're going in from, roughly from the Safeway to the bypass area, the state will be stocking in the Boulevard Edition, I believe. So, it's a lot of fish in the river, and they're looking to do more work on that habitat, so it was all good news on that. They did have a question about some trash cans and dog waste stations east of the dog park along the River Walk. They say they're noticing a lot of, uh, dog crap and stuff down in them areas that are placed to put the, uh, waste, if it is picked up. They also noticed that we're having some problems with the concrete on the tennis courts, and they were asking if there is a guarantee on that work, and, and what possibly might be...
We're treading into that.
All right. And, if you Google park, oh, never mind this, for something else, that was my number. All right, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Um, I also regretted, regrettably, was not able to attend the governor's meeting here, I was in New York. It was a trip that was planned many months ago, and people coming in from overseas, and I just, I went, I went to New York. So, I apologize for not being here, but it was delayed at one point, wasn't it going to be in March, and then it was delayed until, yeah, I think it was. Yeah. Um, let's see, what else, I went to the Comedy Festival this past weekend, turnout was terrific. Um, I think it's going to get better and better and better every year, you know, it's Trinidad, so there were some people that were just cutting their teeth on the microphone, um, but there were some people that just made me laugh out loud, and it was, I really enjoyed the turnout, and the way it made me feel. And this was, it happened right after the groundbreaking ceremony, which I attended. So, it was groundbreaking, the reception, and the comedy fest, I mean, I felt like, jeez, you know, I've got to get a fatter calendar to write all these bets. But, that was very, a very, very nice event, and I thought, Si and staff and mayor, they all did a great job, Dana showed up, it was wonderful. Um, I also attended a festival that the Creative District sponsored, it was the Trinidad Poetry Festival, it was the second, um, annual, and I think we're going to be doing it in the future, but turnout for the first year was okay, it was terrific for the second year. So, uh, I don't want to congratulate, congratulate Marilyn and everyone involved in, uh, in putting that together. Um, and that's it, that's all I've got, Mr. Wolfers?
Well, I too was fortunate to go to the Comedy Festival, which I thought was really well-produced, considering there were so many venues that were being utilized, I'd want to give a big kudo shout-out to Wally Wallace for bringing that to Trinidad. And I liked how he was able to tap into the Southwest Chief, which is kind of a big topic for us these days, and to maybe bring some light to how it's a vital source of transportation that comes through Trinidad, I thought that was great. Um, the twenty-sixth of April, we had the C M L board meeting, and just to keep you apprised of a few things, um, there are some affordable housing amendments, or in legislation pieces that are going through. House Bill nineteen thirteen oh nine is an enforcement of Mobile Home Park Act. Uh, this provides counties and statutory authorities to have authority to pass ordinances under this law. Uh, right now, there's a lot of contention about mobile home parks sometimes, so I received...
No, I hear it.
But, um, but they're, they're just trying to bring some light to this, so there can be more, um, renters' rights of sorts, if, that's how I gathered it. Uh, there's also House Bill nineteen thirteen twenty-two, this one I think is really interesting. Uh, there's an expansion of supply of affordable housing, and C M L wants to support this, because what it'll do is it'll take thirty million dollars in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one from unused funds in Colorado's Unclaimed Property Trust Fund, and they would transfer that to the Department of Housing section of DOLA for grants and loans, line item in, in line with DOLA. So, that might be something to help us out with a lot of our older apartment buildings here in town that need to be renovated. And the interesting thing is, it does provide funding, uh, with asbestos abatement included. And they're looking in to see if it actually would include for entire demolitions to renovate, because there is a situation with that as well. Um, yeah. Uh, few other things that were really interesting, um, not really pertaining to us, like limited gaming, which is more towards Cripple Creek and the central city areas. But there is a lot pertaining to public safety with substance abuse prevention, especially towards opioids. And I know we have an issue with that down here, so the Senate bills that I'll be keeping out for everyone, and keeping you apprised of a Senate Bill nineteen two two eight. Uh, there's also Senate Bill nineteen dash two two seven, which is a substance abuse harm reduction. And then also Senate, or House Bill nineteen twelve eighty-seven, which is substance abuse treatment. And a lot of these are getting funding from marijuana sales tax dollars, so that was one of the questions that was brought up, like, where is all the money coming from? Luckily, it's coming from tax dollars, where other people are paying for it. Um, the C M L Annual Conference is coming up this June, I believe it's the eighteenth to the twenty-first, so if you haven't registered, please do so soon, because they're running out of rooms up there.
We already have.
Oh, good. Um...
Did you give me them?
I don't know, have you already asked for a room?
I don't know.
We had a hard time finding those as well.
So, that's basically my summation from the C M L board meeting. Um, Kevin Bomber's doing really good, he's going to be here next Tuesday for a town traveling tour throughout Colorado. So, if you can, he'll be here in City Hall Chambers at nine A.M. If you want to give him any feedback about things, that's a great time to do so. And I'm sure I'm forgetting something, but I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
I was not, I was also not at the governor's meeting, I didn't have a valid excuse, it's, I'm just not a member of the person. So, I apologize, but I just can't do that, I'm the oldest member of council, and you guys got to give me a...
I'll sort of that.
Yeah, I've got my driver's license. I, I'm the liaison for the library board, and all I can say about the library is that I, I came to a conclusion that it is a community center for the mind. It's like what the community center is for physical activity, our library has become a community center for educational purposes. I'm, I'm sorry, Tom Harland was supposed to give us some newsletters, he didn't give them to you, but it's amazing, the activities that are going on in that library, they're really gearing up now for the children's, some reading, some of the youth programs, so, that's good. I also attended the Colorado Main Street Historic Main Street Board meeting, just this afternoon. And I'll tell you what, those, those ladies eat like nobody I have ever seen, they have a spread every week, every meeting, there's a spread of some kind, but... They did, they're excited because they did get the funding through, it, it's hard to explain to those ladies that just because the commission, the board meeting that you were at last night approved their project, doesn't mean that City Council's going to approve their project. So, now their, their projects are, they're going to replace the blue statue on the roundabout with a horse, a horse that you give. And also, they're going to put musical instruments in Glendina Park, and I have to explain to the...
More pianos?
No, the, the, have you ever seen a picture of them?
These are park instruments.
Park instruments.
Uh, yeah, I know.
So, I'm, I'm trying to somewhat educate them, one of the ladies stuck her tongue out at me today, but I'm trying to educate them that you just can't start a project with talking to the people that own the property, with the seed, it's okay for you to do that. And, and that's tough, for instance, they want to paint a mural on our new bathroom on Commercial Street.
I'll put sunflowers on there.
They, they want a butterfly on there with the hashtag Trinidad, Colorado, so people can stop and take a picture. I said, I don't, don't, don't even ask.
By the way, isn't that something to that on the murals? At least we're having this proliferation of murals all around town, and I'm not crazy about it, to tell you the truth, I mean, is there a sign code restriction on those?
That's what I told them, I said, we do, I said, go find out your potential, uh, buildings that you want to paint, and then bring it to somebody in staff, and see what it takes to do that. I, I think the more we talk about arts and culture and art around our community, I think we're in dire need of some type of master plan for art. I, I don't know how to, it's like Correll and...
Also, because some of those murals are out of control, yeah.
Beauty is in the eye of the beholder, especially when it comes to art. Then they had, they asked me if Ed would mind if they painted a mural on our site, on our building.
Absolutely.
No, no. So, that's where they're, they're trying to find, um, a building to do a mural on, so. And they're also asking, great, they're going to have that DOLA training on the twenty-second of May, and they're trying to figure out if there's money out there to pay for lunch. So, I told them if not, we'll figure it out. But, I mean, it, it's apparent to me that some of these boards and commissions need a little, the DOLA training is going to be wonderful, but it's, they've got to understand, you just can't go out there. It's still after, I've told them four times, that the Workforce Center is a privately owned building. They still have on their agenda many grants to be used for multi-artist mural on workforce buildings. And I keep telling, this is about the fourth time it's appeared on their agenda. So, just FYI, if you see sunflowers on the bathroom, you know who to go to. No.
I have a quick question for you regarding the, uh, horse sculpture you mentioned, where is that funding now?
Arts and culture.
There any other ones?
It actually comes out of the government commission, more money in, in the marijuana.
Okay.
It's funded, dispersed to them from us, basically.
But it's, it's also, it's also a proposal, it's not a done deal.
I was wondering if we had already approved it, and I was asleep or something.
Well, that's just...
That's why I'm trying to...
Oh, okay.
See, they, I, they don't get that concept, that they don't have the ability to spend money. It's not a done deal, and they were celebrating already this afternoon.
I, I guess I'm just concerned for the artist who's maybe commissioned to do this, and he's working on it, and then all of a sudden, well...
It's being done, it's near complete. Are you ready for me yet?
Yes, sorry, that's all I wanted to say.
Well, to those of you who have gone before, likewise, I was able to make the governor, uh, for whatever benefit it was to me to be there, certainly none to him. Um, I did attend, that Friday was a busy day, it was so, Jack and Michelle, my wife and I had dinner downtown, and then, well, first we went to the groundbreaking, and then just went to where the building, which was kind of interesting, having that years ago, a business in the north corner of that building. But, be that as it may, it was interesting to do that and see the goodness that's coming to our, our way. Uh, that Friday was a very busy night, because there was a vibrancy and an energy, a palpable, an energy. Town, as we drove through, was full of people on bikes, walking and elsewhere, which is one of those things that I think we're striving to get. However, it has to, it is not through our doing only, it's through the work of a lot of people, and we have to recognize that. And to your point, this is like deja vu all over again, when, when you hear what Main Street is doing as compared to Arts and Culture, the horse, for example. It's in the works, and, and there's, I suggested that you coordinate an effort, you mean, your efforts and energy as a volunteer group are like being poured into a funnel, but at the bottom, there's some point at which it all comes together, where decisions are made yea or nay, proceed or not proceed with this, you suggested a mural or a butterfly on the restroom downtown.
I didn't...
Or some, well, somebody's wanting to do that, but in, when I was at Arts and Culture, they are hell-bent on buying these sunflowers and roses, and they thought it would be a good idea to put these metal roses, or sunflowers against that building. It, it's a very purposeful mindset about art, and the fact that this is a blank canvas, that we can do whatever we want, all willy-nilly, and I, like you, tried to rein that enthusiasm in such a way that it doesn't get really crazy about what we're doing, and that our whole town will look at it like a garage sale, that's not exactly what we have in mind. But, at the same time, you, there's, we're gaining traction in the things that we're doing, having been here for all this, this stagnant part of life, through the sixty-seven years I have been here, okay, and that, that's very encouraging and opening. And those are the positive sides of what I have to comment on. On, on the negative side, and I'm just going to put it out there, I'm very disappointed that Linda Baron's efforts for the Santa Fe Trail Days go unfunded by tourism. I understand that there may be legitimate reasons why, I respect that. But at the same time, I hold, I and others hold Linda, I think, in great regard for the things that she has done. We're talking about next week having a military parade, she'd obviously be front and center on that thing. She's front and center on a lot of things, she has supported and endorsed tourism in many, many things. Tour, the Chamber of Commerce could well be dead and buried if it wasn't for a lot of the stuff that Linda has done. And it's very disappointing to me to know that, her efforts go unknown. She came in to where I work to take care of personal business, and then asked if she could have a moment of my time. She put her hands to her chest and said she was hurt, and I, it's visible in her, in her eyes, that she felt like... Not given any regard or consideration, despite all that she has done for this community, at least in the twenty-five years that I've known her. And it's, it's unfortunate that that happens, and I'm thinking, Santa Fe Trail Days is in June, there's not a whole lot of time left for her to hear what she has to do. And, resourceful as she is, she'll probably make it happen to the best of her ability, and, um, just disappointing. And then also information that, as I was looking into that, I was provided, I, with certain information about the funding of other programs that was misleading, purposeful or not, I can't decide, but nonetheless, I was led to believe that it was an annual contribution, and the truth of the matter is, it's a monthly contribution. It's, it's, there has to be an honesty, a forthcoming, and a, and a genuine nature about the persons who serve on board and commissions to, to act with purposeful diligence and consistent with, with common sense, if I don't think often happens, it becomes very proprietary, and it doesn't, it lies in the face of all the traction and momentum that we are gathering, to have a big hiccup in the building. And again, final word, it's disappointing that her program and her efforts are not rewarded in front of the media, that's the way it is. And on that, this case will note, I'm forced to close.
Uh, just for some information, and like I said, and, and you look at that. The other thing I did recommend after that is that, uh, because there's another round of, of applications that, that they can apply for, and how they want to do that, for like a reimbursement, that's a possibility that they could do. But anyway, and I understand what you're saying, and, you know, I felt the same way, but, anyway. The other thing we need to start considering, because I don't want to happen what happened last week with the C M L conference, whoever is going, because I'm not going to go this year, uh, whoever is going to be able to vote, I think that we pick that person maybe in the next meeting, uh, whoever's going to go, because I'm not going to go, I just, I have something else going on that I'm very committed to on one of those days that I need to be here.
Before your question, will we have a meeting before then to designate orders?
Yeah, because that's not the twenty, is it?
That's the twenty-first.
So, we'll have it probably the first week in June.
Okay, good. We have time.
Oh, yeah.
Between now and today, can designate?
We'll bring that up at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, government, I mean, the governor's meeting that was here in town at the Quinta Inn, that was kind of nice. Uh, I did express and extend an invitation for him to come out sometime during the summer, and to allow maybe five or six hours to maybe tour the Crazy French Ranch, we'll see if he does. I know Debbie Leitner is interested in maybe trying to set something up, but that'll see if it happens. Uh, you know, you talked about the poetry thing and how it builds, and each, a lot of these projects or these events, that's what happens. It, it starts off with a few, and it builds from there, so it's good to see that these events are building momentum. Uh, and to Ms. Grigo and Anthony's question, I think one of the things with this art thing, I think we need to come up, they need to come up with a master plan for the city of Trinidad, because like you said, Mr. Tate, you know, you don't want to have, you know, butterflies here and, and drones here, and, you know, something else.
I know.
I think we need to have, I think we need to have a master plan for the community, and I think it'd be, I think that's something that...
And I think it'd be, I think that's something that, uh, Arts and Culture probably should, uh, start working on before they go forward with anything else. I think it'd be a good idea. Uh, the next thing we wanna do is, uh, because, and I'll let Greg talk a little bit about the Starburst Award, but, uh, I'd like to move the June fourth meeting to either Monday the third or Wednesday the fifth. Being, Greg, I just gotta turn it on at this time.
Sure, um. The Purchase of the Crazy French Ranch has been awarded a Starburst Award through the Colorado Lottery as an excellent use of lottery, lottery funds. And it's one of, I think, ten projects across the state that received the award this year. And they like to have recognition ceremonies, and they, um, there's gonna be a group that's gonna be here, I think, from the second through the fourth. And so they, um, are tentatively planning to have that ceremony, that recognition on the fourth. So if we can have the meeting on the third, that'd be great.
Where will that be, are you seeing it there, Denver?
Huh?
Oh, here, it's huge.
Good job.
Third works for me.
Regrettably, I won't be here anytime. I, I will be driving to walk my daughter down the aisle.
Oh, that?
Yeah. She decided to get married in Napa, California, a year ago.
Wonderful.
Take those metal roses.
Yeah.
I do have the socks, but. And everybody else okay with, with that?
Sure.
Third. The third, okay.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock, same time.
Unless you wanna do a work session before.
Something else, can we do a work session?
Well, maybe so.
We'll figure that out, okay. Uh, I also wanted to say that, you know, thank the city employees for participating in the Trinidad Community Foundation and Comcast Days this last weekend. Uh, they're getting picked up a whole bunch of trash, and it was really timely, because we're now just getting into the tourism, the tourist season. So the city and the area that we cleaned up, it's nice and clean, so it gives, uh, it's about a month later than what we used to do, but I think it was timely rather than earlier. Allows less trash to get built up. Now. Greg and I had two calls, uh, on the legislative issues that came through. Of course, the legislation, legislators finished up last Friday. And I think as of last Wednesday, they still have like, what, close to a hundred bills?
And they, and they, like Monday, they were still submitting them, so.
Yeah. She mentioned that the big majority of them would probably die, because they just didn't have time. Uh, it was good to see, you know, the Milton Garden groundbreaking, that was an interesting move forward. Met with Art Space.
Oh, I forgot to mention.
Michelle and I and Greg, we all met with Art Space last week. Uh, and I'm not sure if you've noticed or not, but they started some work on the Elm Street project. They're doing some groundwork there already.
Good.
So that started that. Um, there was a lady that we met with our, Amy Swedick is her name. She's the Director of Rural and Statewide Networks, and they will be here, uh, in June. And Greg and I sat and talked with her, and it's a fairly new organization. And it just sounds like they, they try to, they don't come down, and they're not bringing any money, but they might have some areas where money can be applied, or possibly, from what I gather. That's what it sounds like. Kinda like a mini Rural Philanthropy Day type thing for the city of Trinidad, but that's something that we'll be doing. Uh, Felix and I met with that, for the Los Angeles County Forum Group that I've been talking to you guys about. And between he and I, we decided to expand it to fifteen people. And we did take a little of, like I think somebody mentioned, of getting like a student, getting somebody of, you know, like a layperson, the business people, so that we'll have, and people from the county, so that we have good cross-section of the entire county and everybody to get some ideas. Something I wanna mention is that I think we have one of those platforms that's not being used, that's like in front of Moose's.
No, that's being used.
But there's another, an extra one that's not being used, correct?
Yeah, there's one that's still at the mining museum that we're not using.
You know, I was thinking, is there a way that maybe?
No, it's not there.
No, it's not there.
We still have it.
There's one at Central Park.
Right.
We, we have talked about making them into docks to go out into the lake.
You know what I think would be a good idea is maybe behind the train, or overhand, you can overlook the river somewhere, something like that, where people, tourists come in, can have, have lunch, and I think it'd be kinda neat. Anyway, give that some thought. Uh, I met with Laura Tucker yesterday, uh, and she was just asking me if I felt, and she wanted to extend this to council. If council had any feelings as to how things at the Mitchell are being operated now, because they are opening up for a lot more venues right now, events. So they're looking for suggestions. If you guys have any, give her a call. And, you know, mention to them what maybe other uses that, uh, they might have for the center down there. So it'd be good to, if you have any ideas.
I give them credit. I've been in that building more lately than I have been in the past six years I've lived here in Trinidad. So I think they're really doing a good job.
Well, they're gonna be having two or three of the events that our community or the city's, well, two events, I think. The city might be involved with this summer. And I think, she said they have, I think, three weddings planned so far, and I'm not sure what else they have going on. Um, and getting back to the tourism thing, uh, they did approve some grants. Unfortunately, the issue that, uh, you talked about, that Mr. Tei talked about. The one thing I did mention to them, and upcoming, I wanna schedule a work session with tourism, so we can all get together and talk about what's going on with tourism. So that would be upcoming, so just, yeah. That is all I have, Mr. Tei. Yes?
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, there's something that's really been bothering me for a number of years now, and, uh, and that's up there by the water treatment plant, the waters, the growth and the trees in there. And I was just wondering, is there any way that the city could work with the forestry industry to maybe go up there and look at the timber, maybe get some, some recommendation to, to thin it out a little bit? Because, you know, we're looking at firehouses up there, and I mean, I was up there a couple weeks ago, and it's so thick up there that that fire.
Right near the water.
Water, water.
Because we've been doing, we've been doing a lot of mitigation around the treatment.
I'm not just saying the, the water treatment plant right around the area up there, because of the, you know, there's, that fire that we had up here before, we were just lucky it didn't jump that mountain that way down, and we, so. It's been bothering me for a long time, and I just thought maybe there's something we can.
The hillsides around North Lake are really.
Huh?
The, the hillside around North Lake is really thick. I tried to walk that.
Oh, yeah, you can't. And that, and that's a concern. Maybe we could just give it a, give it a chance. Thank you, Mr. Tei.
Greg?
No, Mike? You said no.
No. I, I was gonna mention that for the past four years, we've contributed fifty thousand dollars matching for grants to do mitigation in our watershed, so we have been working on it. It's not like we haven't been up there, there's just a lot.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying that's not doing the job. I'm just saying that.
No, no.
We better do something now while we can before the smoke gets to the fire, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Greg?
Um, as Councilmember, uh, Mopis said, we, Kevin Bommer's coming here next week. We'll try to send out a, a reminder on Monday, so he can show up in the morning and enjoy Mr. Coffee's stuff.
Yeah. No, is it two or under?
Two sticks.
Two sticks, yeah.
Um, one of the other grants that, I, I can't remember which organization is applying for it, but, um, there's a grant that's available that they wanna apply for, for the Crazy French Ranch that's through, I think, US or state forestry. And you can, you can purchase up to nine hundred acres of property. So X is a way to reimburse them for some of the costs. And they can do, I think, a different grant like that every year. So that will also help to come up with the purchase cost of the property. With the horse sculpture, um, the artist is making it. That has not been, um, contracted.
I, I have, we have seen pictures.
So, so the artist is just making it. If, if it's decided that it's, that it'll be purchased for the city, then it will be purchased. If it's not, he'll sell it to somebody else. It's not something that Arts and Culture contracted and told him to go build. He's just doing it. So, uh, that will be coming to use probably for the next meeting. It was discussed and recommended last night at the Board Chairs Meeting. And I just told them the night before, we can't put that on the agenda, so that will have to come up at the next meeting. But they do fully understand that this is a lot of money going out, and that, um, they're not the final authorities.
What, what could we do? I mean, it sounds like there's a consensus amongst all of us in that discussion about having a master plan.
Um, it's probably a little hard to do with art. I mean, you can get some, you can, you can have kind of an idea of where you wanna go with things, but to decide now where every piece of sculpture will be, and every, what every sculpture will look like is kind of a monumental task.
I wouldn't say what the item would look like. I would say placement more than anything right now. Available space.
Um, I, that has been bantered around for a long time. I, I think there's a lot of spaces. One of the things that we need to avoid is like, for instance, you can't keep just putting stuff in the Schmedel Park. You're gonna fill the park up at some point. We need to, we need to look at like making the River Walk more attractive by putting things along and the people can see every once in a while. And I don't mean every thirty feet. I mean, something you run into every once in a while, and, and it gives a visual, visual, uh, attraction to it and fits with things. Because the fact is, with, with public art, you're spending public money. So it has to be, there are limitations to it. It has to be something that people are willing to accept and buy.
I was gonna say, at least if we can get an idea of placement, a number of pieces in an area or something like that.
And I, I sent you all a list that I got out of this one book of some of the ideas for deciding what's appropriate art for public art. And it, uh, I didn't expect to run across it. The book was not about buying public art or anything. It was, it was, it's a book called For the Love of Cities. And it, it was a very simple little list you can go through when you're making those kind of decisions.
I have nothing. Other than the nuggets game is on tonight.
So you're telling us to hurry up, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
What time you say, eight-thirty?
Yeah, it is, eight-thirty.
Okay.
Looks on to item eleven. Executive Session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real personal or other property interest under CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two forty-eight. Possible acquisition of property, motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second, any expression on that? Uh, hold on, please.
Benato?
Yes.
Yes.
Reiko?
Yes.
Robes?
Yes.
Matek?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Okay, there isn't gonna be any decisions made afterwards.
We've got time to take a watch break.
Right.